Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education regular meeting for Centerville City Schools for Monday, November 25th, 2024. Ms. Sauber, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Dr. Graff.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. First up, we have a couple of honors. I will turn it over to Mr. Tarpey.
Thank you, Mrs. Durnbaugh, and good evening. This evening, it is my pleasure to formally introduce to the Board and our community Centerville High School's new athletic director, Mr. Brandon Hahn. Mr. Hahn, step forward, please. Mr. Hahn's already started the transition process with our athletic team, and he'll start in his official capacity as our new athletic director on Thursday, January 2nd. Brandon is a proud graduate of University of Cincinnati, where he had a distinguished career as a student track athlete. As I mentioned last Monday night, Brandon was one of 88 applicants for the position, and he endured a rigorous and comprehensive selection process. Mr. Hahn began his professional career in athletics as a collegiate track coach at the Division One college level. From 2013 to 2019, Brandon served as the director of sprints and hurdles at Florida State University. From 2019 to 2021, he was the coach of sprints, hurdles, and relays for Texas A&amp;M University. In 2021, he joined the track coaching staff at Illinois University, where he again coached sprints, hurdles, and relays. In 2023, Brandon was hired as the assistant athletic director and head track coach at Cincinnati Walnut Hills High School. Mr. Hahn has been highly successful in his previous roles. He comes to the Centerville City Schools with the highest endorsement from his professional peers at Walnut Hills High School. So we are extremely excited to officially welcome him here this evening to the Centerville City Schools, and so at this time, it's my great pleasure to present to you Mr. Brandon Hahn.
Thank you, Dan. I can hold this. Thanks to you all for your time, taking the time to welcome me. From the beginning of the process, I felt very welcome. I love athletics. I love young folks. I love building people. I love everything I've seen here at Centerville. So one thing that I'm excited about, I guess congratulations on the levy passing recently. That's part of what I'm excited about, is how much support Centerville shows its student athletes, how much education's valued. And so anyone that wants to build anything knows you have to have a strong foundation if you want to plant seeds and have a good garden. You have to have good soil. And so all of that is here, which I'm excited about. I'm ready to get to work with our young folks and our coaches and the community to take further strides in the pursuit of excellence at Centerville. A lot of success here, a lot of rich tradition and history here, and so that happened long before me. And so my job is to try to take it the next step, and as we say in track and field, when you get the baton, make sure you know what to do with it. You know, you have to take it the next step to victory. So thank you, guys. Look forward to communicating with you all and answering any questions you may have and building that relationship to help make sure that our students at Centerville are better cared for than anywhere else in the state of Ohio. Thank you.
I think you can see Brandon's probably going to wear this thing out going up and down. So good evening. Tonight, I'm going to kind of piggyback off what Brandon said. You know, planting seeds, you've got to have good soil. So tonight, I'd like to introduce Kelly Peters. Kelly, would you please come forward? So in case you're not aware, Kelly is the chairman of the Board for the Citizens Committee for Centerville City Schools. She has several members of the committee here tonight, and this is just a great opportunity to recognize Kelly in the commitment for their work in sharing the message as to why the school district was back on the ballot this past November. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Kelly. She's going to recognize the volunteers that work so hard for the Citizens Committee.
Thank goodness this is adjustable. Okay. First, thank you, John, for the kind words. As John mentioned, I'm the chair of the Citizens Committee for the Citizens Committee for Centerville City Schools. We need to come up with a shorter name. I'd like to thank all of the volunteers, including those that aren't here tonight, and I will mention some names along the way, but please know that these efforts were very broad, very wide, and involved people that maybe have never even stepped into the building. So the coalition that was built on this campaign included parents, staff members, elected officials, business leaders, community leaders, and community members that don't have a direct tie. So this was a very broad-based community effort, and I want to recognize that and make sure that everybody's aware of that. A bit of background on the committee, in case you don't know. The committee is 100% volunteer-based. No one on this committee does this for any other reason other than we are passionate about the schools. And we believe in the schools. We believe in what you all as board members do for the schools. We believe in all of the district's staff and what they do for students day in and day out. And that is why, and I am comfortable speaking for everyone, that is why people give up their personal time with their family and outside of their careers to volunteer for initiatives such as this past campaign. So I'm grateful to have all of these folks that I'm going to introduce you to. Real quick, we do have a PAC governing board, so that work includes some people that were on the campaign team, but it also includes some people that are just on the governing board. And I say "just," but is not an appropriate way to frame that, but that did not take a campaign role this time around. So if all of you that are here can come up, please, you're welcome. There was a little debate over whether they would need to come up. All right. Thank you. I do better when I can walk around. I'm not going to go in order, but real quick, the governing board, Shelley Bush, sorry, I still do that, and Maha Kashani are our parent reps. Missy Fairs and Cara Durker are our staff representatives on the governing board, and Nick Berger, who couldn't be here tonight, is our treasurer. On the campaign committee itself, these are committee leads. These are folks that stepped up and decided to be a part of defining what this campaign would look like and take a lead role in coordinating efforts and volunteers around their specific committee. So I'll start here. This is Mark Peters. Yes, we are related. Mark did all of our voter data and voter data analysis, partnering with all of the other committee chairs that you'll meet, providing critical information so we knew where to go and how to get there. Cara Durker and Merrill's not here, but Cara, Merrill, and Shelley were all liaisons into specific networks of people that they took responsibility for. And these networks were designed, and these folks made these networks powerful because they informed constituents that are outside of the actual campaign team. They helped keep those people engaged, they kept them informed, and they kept them prepared to talk to other people that they ran across every day to talk about Issue 31 and why we needed it to pass. So I thank all three of you for the networking that you all did. It was a grassroots campaign, and you can't do grassroots if all the communication stops at the committee level. So they made sure that that didn't happen. Chelsea Stinet was in charge of our targeted outreach, and she stepped up before we knew what that meant exactly. So she took on alumni outreach and student outreach, as well as outreach to unregistered parents that are in the district. So Chelsea did a great job, and I have to say, and I don't know, Chelsea, you probably already knew, but I learned a great deal from the alumni and students about social media and how to actually use half of it that I didn't know. Shelley, I talked about. Missy governing board, Jason was visibility. So all the signs you saw, all the yard signs, 1,500 of them plus. Jason coordinated the assembly of those and the delivery of those into all of the yards, and subsequently, the collection of those to be cleaned up, washed off, packed up, and saved for future use. So thank you, Jason. Jason is also responsible. He and Mark both worked on the door-to-door campaigns, such as canvassing and literature drops. So if anybody knocked on your door, Jason's the guy. Brian Kaat and Tyler, Tyler's not here. Nick, not Tyler, sorry, Nick couldn't be here. Nick Snyder are CCTA reps that were part of our campaign team and great partnership with CCTA. Erin Booker was in charge of the overall communications and all of the event coordination. She found events where it made sense for the campaign to have a presence, to answer questions from voters, and be visible about Issue 31. Brian Lunny, Washington Township trustee, joined the campaign team. Brian was responsible for all of the large signs throughout the community, and Brian was the one that also kept us focused on the big picture and never let us lose sight of what this community is about as a whole. It's easy to get kind of narrow when you're talking campaign specifics and different constituents, but Brian always reminded us about what this overall community is about and how to engage them. So thank you. Few people are not here in addition to the ones that I talked about. Merrill Matthews is not here, but she was a key player. Maha was in charge of fundraising, marketing, and social media, so she was very busy. Jesse Leidel and Tom Henderson did community outreach. They partnered with dozens and dozens of community organizations to make sure that the campaign was represented or was just there to answer questions at any community event that made sense. Let's see, who else? Sonya Keller did Get Out the Vote. I just want to make sure I get all their names in. She was our Get Out the Vote lead, and Lynn Cowell was our volunteer lead and worked with Erin on communications. So you can see, and I told you a little bit more than their names, so you could get a sense of what this campaign was about and all of the people that it took. In addition to thanking them, I'm comfortable speaking on your behalf again, but I want to thank the community for every person that took the time to get to know about Issue 31, for every person that decided to make a financial donation, volunteered in any way, spread the word, and of course, voted for Issue 31. The committee thanks you. And thank you to the Board and each of you for all that you continue to do in support of these students and staff that we are fighting for in all of our efforts. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. Next up is public participation. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Presiding officer of each board meeting at which public participation is permitted shall administer the following rules of the board as printed in the agenda. We have two speakers this evening. Mr. Cook is up first.
Good evening. My name's Tim Cook, and I've been a homeowner here in the district for 24 years. On November 7th, the Dayton Daily News ran a story about a Centerville City Schools employee who was allowed to resign after being accused of misconduct involving district finances. This included misuse of a school district credit card, which also involved other school employees and other departments over an unspecified but apparently lengthy period of time. I've never met this person, and I don't support misconduct, but even if the allegations are true, he could not have done what the article says he did unless the district's internal financial controls are weak and ineffective. The state auditor's office has published a list of credit card best practices, any one of which would have uncovered the misuse much sooner or perhaps even prevented it entirely. These are very basic common sense policies, such as requiring itemized receipts for purchases, designating approving officials to reconcile billing statements, and training cardholders on their duties and ethical standards. The list concludes with this statement, and I quote, "The entity providing the card is in the best position to prevent misuse by establishing and enforcing appropriate controls." Unquote. Now, you may be tempted to think that the state's annual audit report clears the district. That's what I used to think too, until I read the report. The auditors repeatedly emphasize in the report that they take no position on whether the district's controls are actually effective. So that's not a defense for doing nothing. Clearly, there was a serious breakdown in the district's supervision of this employee and its oversight of the credit card program. We need you to correct these errors to ensure the credit card misuse is not happening elsewhere and does not happen again. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Subcek.
Good evening. Paul Subcek, Washington Township. I'm just looking for some clarification on the five-year projection that's going to be made today for financial standings. The levy is going to generate $11.2 million, and my recollection was that we thought that that would take the district out five, possibly six years before it had to get back on the ballot again. But my understanding is the $11.2 is the levy. $5 million was added to the budget from Montgomery County for inside mileage. $3.5 million was added to the budget in savings. And from Mr. Young's office, as best I can interpret all of the data that he gave me, there's a half a million dollars that's going to come into the school district on top of the base funding, fixed funding that we talked about in 2025. So the $5, the $3.5 and a half a million, that's an additional $9 million. And I'm just looking for an understanding of how the $9 million, well, first of all, am I correct with the $9 million number? And if I am correct with the $9 million number, how does that tie into $11.2, which now becomes $20 million? And then why are we still, knowing all of this, are we still at four to five years before we come back on the levy? So I don't have all the information. I think I have accurate numbers for the $5 million and $3.5 and the $5, but I don't know how that ties into the $11 million to the levy and our spending, because if I remember last work session, we were in deficit on the proposed five-year plan, like year four or five going out. So I don't know how this $90 million wouldn't keep us out of that. Looking forward to more information. Thank you. Yes? I have only asked, I have only asked to confirm that the $5 million was an accurate number, because that was in the Dayton Daily News. The $3.5 is always from the levy, and the information Mr. Young's office, I just got recently. So no, I haven't specifically gone to her. Good point. And I have contacted Mrs. Sauber, and you are correct. She is very generous with her information, and she's very factual. I think this is something that, instead of a one-to-one conversation, should be something that the public understands, because we're going to be back on the levy again at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe Ms. Sauber's going to go over the five-year forecast again in her report, so maybe some of that will become clear as well. Next up is the legislative report. Mrs. Sparks.
Duck season. Sit back, there's a lot to go through. Sorry, guys. Newly elected members, the House and Senate held informal votes to decide chamber leadership for the upcoming 136 General Assembly. Matt Huffman was selected to be the speaker of the House, and Rob McColey was selected to be the next Senate president. These elections will be finalized on the House and Senate floor when chambers officially meet in January 2025. The first hearing on Senate Bill 311, this bill would allow students to receive an ed choice voucher and either an autism or John Peterman special needs scholarship in the same year. I know all of us know what that is, but just for the public. The autism scholarship program gives the parent of a child with autism who qualify for a scholarship the choice to send the child to a special education program other than the one operated by the school district of residents to receive their education and services outlined in the child's individual education program or autism education plan. The John Peterman Special Needs Scholarship Program provides the scholarships to students who are able to attend kindergarten through 12th grade and have an individual education program for their district. The amount of each scholarship will be passed on to the primary disability condition identified on the student's evaluation team report. So if this bill passes, they'll be able to get the scholarships and the ed voucher. The committee held its second hearing on Senate Bill 293. The bill would require districts to adopt a policy allowing students to be excused from school to attend in a release time, I'm sorry, I messed that sentence up. They'd be able to be released for religious instruction. The committee heard in person and written testimony from almost 400 witnesses, which includes proponents, opponents, and interested parties. Reminder that we are still watching House Bill 445, which our student representatives will talk about next in their reports. The first hearing on House Bill 485 was held was sponsored from Representative Young, our representative, and Phil Plummer providing testimony. This bill would require public schools to adopt an internet safety policy for students who use school-provided internet access. House Bill 485 would also require public schools to include instruction in the social, emotional, and physical effects of social media for students in grades 6 through 12. The committee heard sponsored testimonies from Representative Young again and Representative Miller on House Bill 520. This bill would authorize schools to allow students to use participation in club sports and other athletic activities to fulfill requirements for high school physical education. This is really exciting, because our student representatives worked with Representative Young's to make this happen. So good job, guys. The committee held its second hearing on Senate Bill 208. This bill would require school districts to include an exemption for military children's in their open enrollment policies. The committee heard proponent testimonies on that bill. And then the committee held its fourth hearing on House Bill 407. This legislation would require private schools that accept vouchers to meet certain accountability measures. And then finally, I have invited Representative Blackshear to come to our district. He will be replacing Senator Antani in January, and I will let you know when he responds. And that is the end of the report. Thank you.
Questions regarding the legislative report?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. On the bill in relationship to military children coming to our school, you know, we don't have an open enrollment policy. There's no issue from, I think, our school district, we haven't discussed it, about having that occur. My concern is two things. One, it would be exempt from paying any tuition to come to our school, even though they don't live either in our district or another district that's close by, called an adjacent district. One of the reasons we adopted a, not an open enrollment policy, is because we're concerned back in the 1890s that a number of people who want to come to Centerville, so many that we'd have a building problem, a space problem. This bill doesn't address that at all. So if we had have an influx of military families coming to our district, there's nothing in the bill to help us pay for the space, additional space that we might need to get an additional 200 students. There's also an issue about whether or not, or who's going to be paying for the transportation. Analysis of the bill from the Ohio Legislative Services Committee has not addressed that, so we'd also have a concern about the payment of transportation. We welcome military committee, our families to our community. We have about 250, I think, that live in our community, but those coming in from other adjacent and non-adjacent districts don't create an issue as far as the money, even though it would be nice to get the tuition if the state would reimburse us for that, because military families do not have to under this bill. But I think we'd be more concerned about space limitations and who's going to pay the extra building space that we may need in that regard, and that was a concern we had, Dave and I remember in the 1890s, we had that. Another one that was mentioned, the release time, I'll make sure everyone understands, and Megan covered it. They won't allow students to come, go out of classes during a period of time, most of times during the noon time, allow them to leave our school district and be transported by someone else. It eliminates our ability to stop that. And if we have to do that, obviously will, but we think the kids belong in school during school time as opposed to being in other locations, because you can't replace what happens in the school during eating, any of the classes that they may be taken by not being in the classroom, and being transported to the state in the classroom. One other thing that also concerns me is that there has been some discussion in the legislators, and I heard this on a, kind of a number of legislators on a answer, question and answer thing program, and one of the things they're talking about is proposing a constitutional amendment to limit the amount of tax increases that could be passed by any governmental agency, including us, to a lesser of the rate of inflation or 4%. Now, it'd have to go to a constitutional amendment, but you have to think of the consequences of that. Our initial request was over 4%. We needed that money at that point in time, just because they would put a limit on that would just cause every public entity to have to be on the ballot more often. Because if you need more than 4%, if you can't get more than 4%, that creates those issues. I think some of this stuff needs to be vetted out a little bit better, so we don't run into a lot of issues down the road that maybe someone's not thinking about. So I just wanted to make an additional comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our student board representatives.
My name is Lillian Merriman, and I am a senior student board representative, and tonight I will be telling you guys about Arcandian comments that we had during late September before the voting on the levy. During this Canyon comments, our primary goal was to get responses from students about things that they like and dislike about the school and their opinions on the levy as a whole. Prior to the levy being voted on, a lot of students showed their concern for it and how they were concerned that a lot of their clubs, sports, and extracurriculars would be taken away, but that goes very hand in hand with a lot of the things that they like about our school. A lot of students enjoy the very wide range of clubs and sports that we offer at our school, with all the different levels of JV and varsity. They enjoy all of our elective classes, such as philosophy, ceramics, and creative foods. They appreciate all of the opportunities that we give them to work outside of school with other colleges during, through our CCP program. They like how many connections they can make through our community, through both academic and social opportunities, and they also enjoy to have, having off-campus lunch. A couple of the ways that they think our school can be changed and improved right now are our lunch and lunch snack offerings. A lot of people are concerned about our access to feminine products. A lot of them claim that the dispensers that we do offer at our school are not always full, so students are often unable to find any. A lot are concerned about the cleanliness of our bathrooms and how they're taken care of. Some are concerned about the punishment policies, and some believe that some of the punishments are too harsh for the offense. are too harsh for the offense. And a lot of the comments were on phones, however, this is a policy that they must follow due to it being a state mandate. And recently, we've begun reaching out to the student councils at local middle schools. We recently spoke to Magseg Middle School and had some pretty engaging conversations with them. We hope to further get more opinions from the student body by hosting Candies and Comments of sorts through their schools. And that's it for that portion.
Hi, I'm Samaria Williams. I'm also a returning senior on the student board representatives. Mahir and I will be talking about our Montgomery County Student Delegation meeting that happened October 4th. So our first session was about money beyond high school and essentially funding undergraduate studies and going to college. In consensus, there's, there are many ways that you can fund, like going to college. The most common being through federal aid, loans, and scholarships. Financial aid is very circumstantial, and it's based on like the cost of attendance of the school you want to go to, and also the student aid index number that you'll get from your FAFSA that also just opened this weekend. So, seniors, if you're watching this, go fill that out. Some financial aid packages, we've noticed when they gave us paper copies, they're more comprehensive than others. Some will break down the cost of what you get through scholarships, some will just tell you that you can apply for certain federal grant aids, like Appel Grant, and could tell you the possible amount of money that you could get, but really wouldn't tell you like a set deficit, like of numbers that you would be able to receive in regards to paying for school. And we also talked about work-study. It says on here that it opens December 1st, but there's like a beta trial that's opening right now for FAFSA. So it officially opens December 1st, but it's also open right now for students to fill out. Some of the key changes to the FAFSA, it's shorter, more concise. All contributors, like so parents or guardians, must have an FSA ID along with, along with the students. There's the student aid index number that replaces the expected family contribution number, which they're essentially the same thing. It's just about how much can you contribute to paying for your education. And then something that we believe that students should know is that you should, you need to create your FSA ID as soon as possible so you can get your FAFSA in as soon as possible so you can get your financial aid packages as soon as possible.
Hello, my name is Mahir. I'm Mahir Kaider, and I'm a first-year board representative. And I'll be talking about the second part of the Montgomery County Student Delegation meeting. The second, the second part was, we had a deconstructed panel where we got to meet three members or three people that work closely with school boards or on school boards. And the members were first, our very own Centerville Board Member, Ms. Sparks. Then we met the Northmont Superintendent, Mr. Thomas, and then also Tiffany Henser of Ed of Shared Resource Center in Montgomery County. So here are some key points that we learned from this meeting. So from Northmont Superintendent, we learned that they have also been facing some difficulties with levy. They have failed to pass to levies, and he explained to us that they had decided not to go to the November ballot and how it's hard to relay how property tax levies work or justify their fairness. We asked a question that was proposed during one of the Centerville's past meetings, is that why not switch to a Centerville, why not switch to an income-based tax for levies instead of property? And the answer we go back to is that within our community is, it's heavily business-based, and people who already live in Centerville, City of Centerville, receive an income tax already. And essentially, it would be a double jeopardy of sorts, especially in comparison to other counties such as Value View, which are mainly from land or open, and a property tax would for them pose the same kinds of merit that an income tax would for us. But we also got to learn about how exactly a school is funded to the states. We got to learn that house value has a little bit more head weight than the income value. And then we also learned that the bigger a district is, or if a district is deemed to be a self-sustaining community like us, the money that the district receives from the state is lower. So Centerville receives around 3,000, which is well under the state average of 7,000 per student. So this contributes to the importance of making sure we pass these levels to sustain the high quality of education we're known for. Another question that I asked during the, the thing, the meeting was that does the merits or how well the school is doing have any effects on how the school is funded from the states? And the answer that I received was no. Even if, even though Centerville was a five-star school, it doesn't necessarily directly affect how much the state funds us, even though we are a five-star school. But there's, we also learned about another entity, and they supply, if there's a shortage of educational positions, like treasurers, treasurers and superintendents are employees of the board, and sometimes treasurers and superintendents are often outsourced from companies like Shared Resource Center, like Ms. Sauber, who work for both Centerville and Oakwood Schools to help fill that gap. Now, places like the Shared Resource Center help districts with financial services, project management, like Value View, who's having a new high school building. Then, for the rest of the meeting, there's a really high importance placed on being self-aware and talking about how it's important to first be self-aware about yourself and then acknowledge other people's needs and acknowledge the people around you. An interesting statistic that I thought was very interesting was that 95% of people think that they are self-aware. It's nearly everyone. But the reality is that only 10 to 15% of people really are self-aware, which shows you exactly how, first, it's very important to be self-aware because that's how you interact with the community around you. And second, even though you may think you're self-aware right now, it is important for you to look deeper and maybe be more self-aware. And that'll be it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tyus Lee. I'm a junior, and it's my first year as a board rep. Lastly, I'd like to talk to everyone about the Miami Valley Roundtable meeting that Ms. Sparks and I attended November 8th, where we met with other student board reps from other school districts, as well as board members from other schools, as well as principals. We mainly discussed House Bill 445 that Ms. Sparks and Mr. Dahl covered earlier. It was generally the unanimous opinion, unanimous opinion of the Miami Valley Roundtable student reps, that we were not in favor of the bill, that there were just too many stipulations and too many negatives, that we just didn't support it. So recently, we had written letters to our, all of our representatives, respectively, for each school district, advocating our support or not support for the bill. So we sent those letters out. We discussed how the wording is changed from "may" to "shall," suggesting that schools would be required to offer this out-of-time instruction. And we essentially agreed that it just wouldn't be correct, and we all voted against it. That's about it for our student board report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys. It was a great report.
It's a great report, thank you. And we're missing, Maria is, is not with us this evening. Okay, so there is one additional student board rep who we'll hopefully see next month. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Sauber with the five-year forecast.
I want to just touch on a few things about the five-year forecast tonight. We're required to file the five-year forecast two times, once in November and again in May. We are allowed to do filings in between if we, if we need to, but those are the two required mandated filings. And so tonight on the agenda, which we did discuss last week at the work session at length as well, and honestly, we've been talking about finances for about 18 months now. So there really isn't much of anything that I could tell you tonight that sounds any different than any of the presentations that I've been giving in the past. I do want to address a couple of the comments that were made earlier. I believe the $500,000 that was referenced from Mr. Young actually has no bearing on the numbers that you're looking at tonight. That is, I think, likely, but again, I've not talked to Mr. Young myself, that money is for the road project. So there, if you remember, we are in an agreement with the City of Centerville to build a road right out here, out, out towards Clio Road, and we've heard presentations on that, you know, over the past few meetings or, or in the past months. But there, there is an allotment from the State of Ohio that is going to be used to offset some of those costs that will benefit the city and the school district. So that will impact our permanent improvement fund because our, our share of the cost of the road will not be as high as what we had anticipated. But again, permanent improvement dollars, that doesn't have any bearing on the costs that are being presented to you tonight. Inside Millage, just to touch on that, we've known about reappraisal for 18 months. I mentioned 18 months, we've been talking about finances. We talked in great detail last year before the November 23 levy about the reappraisal process and what that does. And I, in every financial presentation that I've given to you, every community forum that we've talked in, I've mentioned the Inside Millage, and that is the area that we do receive additional funds. And so that has been factored into the five-year forecast, the last several forecasts. And so last November, it was still an estimate because we didn't have our final reappraisal number, but in May, we were able to shore that up. And, and again, that's been built into our forecast now for the last two versions prior to tonight. Also, the cuts that were discussed, the cuts were factored into the May forecast as well. So none of this is a surprise to you. These are all numbers and things that we have been talking about regularly every single month for quite a while. And then the last thing to point out, in terms of the five to six-year timeframe, remember, we're, we're behind $11.2 million compared to what we thought we would be or had hoped we would be at this time. When the November 23 levy failed, that delayed any collection of taxes until January of 2025. And so when you think back to our financial picture over a year ago, or about a year ago, you know, we were asking for that money back at that time to help get us through the next five to six years. And so because we've delayed that collection by a whole calendar year, that actually puts our cash position behind where we had hoped that it would be at this point in time, which is why we made the reductions that we made going into the 24, 25 school year. So, just wanted to make a few comments about that as well. So this is very much a summary forecast. This is what you saw last week at the work session. All of the things that we've been discussing in terms of Issue 31 passing, Inside Millage, the reductions, negotiations, all of those pieces that we've been talking about for the last several months are all factored into this five-year projection. So this does get us out of deficit spending for the next four years, which is going to stretch, stretch our, our ask to that five to six-year timeframe. And, and we'll see how the night, five, five years from now is a long time, right? And so we'll see how things go between now and then, maybe it's even seven years, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to wait and see what happens at that point in time. Mrs. Durnbaugh, you asked last week during the work session about the number of days cash. And also, I wanted to just mention also the, the percentage of cash, which I have a visual on that here on the next chart. So I'm actually going to go ahead and, and move to that. But the percentage of cash to expenses is going to trend up a little bit, and you can see that in the chart in those projected years from, from 30% in '25 to 35% to 38%. Keep in mind, the, the visual, the graph that I showed you about historical cash percentages as a percentage of budget when we compared to Montgomery County, and then also to the state level, those numbers are in the 40s. So 40 to 45%. So we're still below what the state averages and what the county averages, but, but we've, we've increased our percentage a little bit and, and we're in a, in a better financial position moving forward. The number of days ranges anywhere from about 57 to 70 over the next three to five So tonight on your agenda, I do have the five-year forecast for your approval. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, but we did cover the majority of, of stuff at the work session as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Wesney is going to take care of the next couple items.
Good evening again. So my part is really kind of piggyback a little bit on what Laura Sauber has presented, very similar to, again, the work session last week, and really looking at moving the district forward and our next plans now that the Issue 31 has passed and we have an opportunity to, to move forward. I think it's important to make sure to thank all of you. You know, it's been a long year. We've had a lot of discussions on when to go back, when to ask the community for the additional tax dollars. The board's been very supportive. We appreciate, or I appreciate that opportunity to have those conversations and, and to really be able to share with the community the factual information we had about Issue 31 and getting the funding secured for the school district. This gives us an opportunity to continue to move forward in thinking, getting back to our strategic plan and some of the initiatives that we have and would like to implement through our strategic plan. Reductions, we've talked a lot about the reductions that we made prior to this school year. Just want to make sure that people understand, we're trying to communicate this, you know, with our staff and with people who, who have been out to talk with us about our reductions. The reductions that we made going into this year will remain. These reductions saved us about $3.5 million. So it's, those reductions are going to be necessary for us to maintain our financial stability, and we hope that will be over the next five to six years that we've talked about in our work session. That means we are not intending to bring all 48 positions that we cut back from the '23, '24 school year. Every year, I think it's important that people realize, we critique each open position to determine whether they need to be, whether they need to be filled. We look at those positions based upon the number of students who are taking part of that program, the needs of our staff, and all those things go in as a factor on whether or not we bring positions back. We've talked a lot about the 2019, between 2019 and the fall of 2023, we'd already cut 17 positions. So overall, we're down 65 total positions. But there are certain areas of our operation that we're going to have to take a serious look at and start looking at some of those positions and make a decision on how we bring them back, maybe be creative on how those positions come back to meet the needs of our, our district. We are starting to receive retirements and resignations. It's kind of hard to believe already. We anticipate several administrative transitions across the district. We will look at the district needs like we always do, as I mentioned, and make those decisions on whether or not we bring those positions back or how we bring those positions back in the future. We'll continue to evaluate each position and determine how we can do things differently, as I mentioned. And we've done that, we continue to do that, and we will continue to do that in the future. We do plan to bring estate field trips. That's something that's been a common question that, that I've received. We're currently working through an equitable plan across the district and how to bring those back, starting next calendar year, the first of the year. And although we've talked about a reduction plan in September if the levy failed, there's some things that came forward that we want to study and look at. It might be another opportunity to continue to save money for the district, and we'll obviously keep you updated on those things as we move forward. And then I want to talk just a little bit about community engagement. You know, part of our action plan is to provide intentional and non-traditional outreach opportunities to connect with families and our community members. I think it's been very helpful and for us over the last year to engage in some of our partnerships. Like I said, over the last year, we've held over 10 community forums, more than 50 informal events like your Elks Connect. We also had meetings with our PTOs, boosters, and several different groups. We want to continue to have those outreach opportunities starting in January. We also are looking to gather additional feedback from a number of district committees. Like we have a very strong curriculum advisory committee, Special Education Committee that Becky Ferby started here recently, Facilities Planning Committee. I think it's all important to keep in touch with, as well as looking at outside our district with some of our Business Advisory Council groups and some of the groups that we work with outside the district. We want to continue to develop a plan to look at Elks Connect events, as I mentioned, and we'll share those dates and topics when we get closer to those dates. But our goal right now is to look at getting back to some of our community engagement in January of next year. So just a brief report for me, unless there's any questions from the board. So just a brief report, um, from me, unless there's any questions, uh, from the board. So I was, talk a little bit now about the library trustee appointment. Uh, you'll recall back in September, uh, we appointed, uh, David Faulkner to the Library Board of Trustees, which is part of the requirement, uh, for the school district, and I can talk a little bit more about that. We knew that was going to be a temporary term. We knew we were going to be back having this conversation again. Uh, it's my understanding that the library went out, sought applicants, uh, they did not receive any applicants, and they would like to reappoint David Faulkner, uh, into this position. So it'd be a seven-year term, which is a normal term for the life, uh, for the Washington Centerville, uh, trustee position. Uh, I think it's just a, a good time to remind folks that the Washington Centerville Public Library is a separate, independent-run entity, uh, from the district. Uh, the library has its own seven-member, uh, policymaking board of trustees, and per the Ohio Revised Code, uh, the Board of Education must appoint or approve the proposed library trustee after they have already vetted out that candidate. And obviously, they've already done that for David Faulkner. So in the agenda, you will see a resolution to, uh, reappoint David Faulkner for a seven-year term for the, for the library. Any questions?
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Up, Student Services.
So tonight, I just want to provide you with just a little bit of an update about what we have going on, um, with student services. I'm not sure everyone in the community is aware, but we have had AED boxes across the district for quite some time now. Um, these boxes are located in every one of our buildings. Um, there are two in each of our buildings, except for here at the high school because, well, the high school is so big. Also, they are at our athletic facilities, so we have special boxes at the football stadium, baseball stadium, and soccer stadium. That is in conjunction with the business office, so that kind of falls under both the business office and student services. Um, in those, we also provide OBIQs. Um, some people ha- know EpiPens, OBIQs are the same thing, it's just a different mechanism. Um, we have those in every one of our AED boxes also, so if there's an emergency, anyone, because our buildings are used all the time for different things, those are there for any emergency that would occur. The, uh, .01 are only in our primary villages. Um, that weight limit on that is only for 16 and a half pounds to 33 pounds. And so really, when you're looking at it for us, um, that really applies more to like our preschoolers, which is why we have them in our preschool buildings, and we haven't added them to our other buildings. Typically, as a district, we use maybe one of our supply ones during the whole entire school year. So we've been providing then, these since prior to me coming, and I've been here seven years now. Um, but it's not very often that we have to use ours that we stock. It's usually we use the ones that parents send for their children if there is a need. But now, we are adding Narcan, um, to our AED boxes also. So with that, I brought a box just as a show and tell. Um, we actually, our nurses receive training, all of our nurses, you know, we had a professional development day on November 15th, and all of our nurses were together, and Public Health Dayton Montgomery County came out and did training for us on how to, um, administer Narcan. So there are directions on the box everywhere. Um, also, in each of our AEDs, there are laminated directions that look like this. I took them and put them on some slides just to show, so there are very clear steps on how to administer Narcan. Um, each of those steps, it lays out what we're going to do. It is important to know with Narcan, unlike your OBIQs, Narcan can be administered to anyone, so there's not a different dose for students versus adults. Um, it's also important to note that if you suspect that it needs to be administered, administering the Narcan is not going to hurt the individual. So it is better to administer than to not administer. Um, our nurses have the ability to train staff if they want to be trained. We have, I have sent out something so the whole district knows that they are located in our AEDs. Um, it is something different for us, but it is, we have been able to get our Narcan, um, through Public Health Dayton Montgomery County, and that comes to us free of charge. If we would have to administer it, which we hope we never have to, I'm just going to say, but if we would have to administer it, Dayton Montgomery County, Public Health Dayton Montgomery County would provide us with another one to replace what we have administered. Are there any questions tonight about it? We do. We do, yes. We have directions on that also. Um, with the OBIQs, it tells you, because the .15 is 33 pounds to 66 pounds, so it really tells you, if you're not sure, so, you know, if I looked at a child, I might not be sure how much they weigh, that you would automatically administer the .3 if you're thinking that they are, you know, anywhere in that range. Obviously, our little, little ones, you have a, you know, a better idea with. But there are directions for administering the OBIQs in there also. And our AEDs talk to us. So, um, if you haven't been trained on the AEDs, they do talk you through each step. So that makes it nice because it gives you a step-by-step direction. It's not something that you have to read.
Just like the OBIQs.
That is correct, just like the OBIQs. Other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Would you guys like to see this?
I don't need to. Did anybody want to see it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the October 2024 financial statements, including monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then-and-now purchase orders approved by administrations, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling $38,243.27.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. Uh, consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, October 28th, 2024 regular meeting, and November 18th, 2024 work session.
So move.
So good.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. Consider approving the general fund five-year forecast and assumptions for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 for submission to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. Uh, superintendent's recommendations are up next. I believe these can all go together. Uh, superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra-duty assign- assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reason and on the dates given. They have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. Consider approving the reappointment of David Faulkner to the Washington Centerville Public Library Board of Trustees to a seven-year term that would begin on January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2031. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. Are there any, uh, final comments regarding past or old business from the Board of Education?
I have something just super fast. I hope you guys don't mind, but I promised my little friends in Mrs. Italis's AM class that I would tell my board friends how well they're working on their dictation. So that's me letting you know so they know that I passed that along. They're working really hard in that class.
Fabulous news.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Another piece of legislation I think we need to be aware of, uh, House Bill 279, school bus safety, uh, passed out of the House Committee. Um, it would require seatbelts in, within five years. We've talked about that multiple times. What I found interesting, uh, about the analysis of Ohio Legislature Service Committee is that at least nine states have passed laws or adopted rules regarding this requirement. However, several states restraining, document restraining device installation has not been implemented due to funding issues and another state's implementation requirement is at the discretion of each school district. So the funding issue is always going to be the issue there, and the cost of having this done, and we, we've had experts come in and tell us about that, is what the states want to do about it for every school district in Ohio. So that's up and coming. We'll see what happens with the rest of the legislation as it goes forward.
All right.
And I have one comment. So at your seat, uh, all the board members receive the, uh, Business Advisory Council booklet. It has a 2024, 2025, uh, plan. It's jam-packed full of information. Just really for everyone's, um, uh, knowledge that school districts are required to be part of a business advisory council or have their own business advisory council. We partnership, we have a partnership with Montgomery County ESC. Um, so I will be later on in the, in the spring asking board members to attend a dinner and meeting to go through, uh, some of the career pathway plans that are outlined. A lot of work in detail, a lot of information about various career pathways and opportunities for, uh, kids in, um, Montgomery County. So if, if you want to sit down and read it, it's, it's got some really good information about programming and what's available for, uh, students from a career education career path standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.